To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got no requests for public comment tonight, as far as I know.
No, nothing.
So we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve, but first, I want to say that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, we will be pulling A five until the next meeting. And now I need that motion to approve.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll lose. Next, we will move on to the social studies textbook presentation. Under Superintendent's recommendations and issues.
Right, before we get to that, there are a number of personnel.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, thank you so much.
There are a number of personnel recommendations that were just approved of the consent agenda. First, we have Catherine Brown. Catherine Brown is going to be the confidential administrative assistant to the superintendent. Catherine comes to us from Boston, Massachusetts, where she served for fifteen years, working as the director of volunteer management for a nonprofit agency that supports student literacy, I believe it's K through three. And she has invaluable community outreach program development, as well as management skills, and we expect that she's going to be a valuable addition to the superintendent's office. Catherine Brown. Next, we have Randy Estrada. Randy is going to join us as a PC technician analyst, and so thank you for joining us. Randy has a bachelor's degree in cybersecurity from Roger Williams. He has experience working in the district as an intern, right? So back to growing your own. So we're growing our own, troubleshooting hardware and software issues, taking inventory of IT equipment, installing hardware, and working with our Spice Works ticketing system. Randy has great interpersonal skills, excellent entry-level tech skills, and is a team player. Welcome aboard, Randy. All right, now we'll get into my neck of the woods. All right, Christopher Keller. All right, Christopher Keller joins us as a social studies teacher at KMS. Christopher comes to us from a position where he's had higher-than-average Rubric scores for all the candidates that were interviewed. Mr. Keller described his classroom page as a one in which it allows students to direct their own learning. He later made this page a resource for public teachers at KMS, and has been, and we know that teachers at KMS have been known to access the resources that he's already put online. The team feels that both his professional life and life experiences. Did you used to be a basketball coach or something?
I was, yes.
Yeah, right, like, so he's got my hoop skills, right? So the team feels that both his professional and life experiences will be a passion to the students, as well as the staff at KMS. And so we'd like to welcome Christopher to the KMS team. Next, we have Yamil Baez, right? And so Yamil Baez joins us as a foreign-language Spanish teacher, right here at Mount Hope High School. And so Yamil's been recommended by the interview team for our collaborative philosophy, considerable knowledge of AP language, her high-quality references, and years of experience. She's a college board AP reader for the Spanish AP exam, and she also teaches a heritage language class for native speakers. And for those of you that don't know how difficult it is to be a college board AP reader, basically, the college board flies all of these smart people someplace in the country, blocks them in a room for about a week, and tells them, read a bunch of essays, and grade them against a rubber, right? So she's doing that kind of work. We just look forward to the work she's going to do, right here at Mount Hope High, for our students.
Okay, anyone else out there who needs? Thank you so much for coming and welcome, so happy to have you all. Okay, now we'll move on to the social studies textbook presentation, which Diane Sanino will.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Hold on.
There's more. All right, you didn't say anything!
Yeah.
Sorry! All right, so we've got Neil Patrick Ross, right? Wave to the crowd, Neil, right? So Neil is a special educator, he's going to be at KMS, right? Neil holds degrees in secondary education, social studies, yay, social studies, special education, political science, as well as public administration. He successfully completed a year-long, long-term special education substitute position in the district last year. He's a graduate of Mount Hope High School, and he can play the student teacher there as a ninth-grade social studies teacher. Welcome home.
Hey, seriously, is there anyone else? Welcome, Neil.
Take it away, Diane. All right, thank you, it's all about social studies tonight. So this is part one of our requests for a new social studies textbook in grades four and five. The one that has been in place is extremely old, and in many classrooms, it's not even usable, so it's long overdue, and this goes along with our two-year initiative to develop a new K through twelve social studies curriculum. We've had a team of K through twelve teachers involved in the process. We started several years ago, and we started with the study of the standards, making sure that we knew the expectations and the rigor of what should be taught, and that's both state and national standards. And then we also took some time to explore research-based practices for social studies instruction. Within the process, we really mapped out K through twelve, what the standards would look like, and we focused on scaffolding learning from school level to school level, so that we had good articulation, and that's something else that was missing in our previous social studies instruction. We also had numerous gaps in learning and overlaps, where teachers were teaching the same thing at different grade levels, so it was long overdue, and we're happy that we had the opportunity to do that. From there, we had great local teams that developed communities of study based on the standards, and this curriculum has increased focus on geography, so we heard loud and clear from the upper grades that kids didn't have a good sense of geography, also civics and state and local history, as well as incorporating real-world learning into the curriculum so that all students would have that opportunity. Also within this, we reached out to the local historical societies, we did a couple of field trips, we had conference calls to make sure that we knew as much as we could about the resources, right, that were in our own towns for teaching history. The Warren Preservation Society also has some information for us that we're exploring further, so that was a good experience. The Rhode Island Historical Society was also very helpful, and we had teachers go in there for several conferences, so it was a great partnership. Also within this curriculum, we are incorporating reading and writing skills, so we know that that's a big expectation right now, that our kids can read, interpret, analyze, comprehend high-level content text, so that's a big part of what we're doing and part of our request for social studies textbook. At the elementary level, we really focused on creating integrated themes, where we were integrating reading and writing in social studies and to whatever extent we could, science, so that it's more cohesive and wasn't breaking up the day and taking up so much time at the elementary level. So we are very pleased to have several teachers here this evening, and I'm going to have them come up and just say a few words. On your table, we have some textbooks that we dropped off, if you want to take a look at them, they will be available in my office before the next meeting, if you want to come in and take a more thorough look at them. I'll just give a brief overview of what's happening at each grade level, and so we'll start with grade three. Grade three's not completely done yet, and it will be more based on literature and books that are connected to their ELA curriculum. But the topics for grade three are my community, mapping my town and state, Native Americans, understanding the perspectives of others, and changes in our environment. Grades four and five, which go along with the textbooks that you have there, are mapping the US, regions of the US, patterns of New England settlement, and Roger Williams' Big Decision, How Government Works, Learning from the Past to Protect Our Future. That's grade four. And grade five is Exploration, Early Colonization, Growth of the Colonies, Cause of Revolution, Revolution, The Effects of Revolution, and A New Nation. So I'm going to turn it over to our teachers here, if you want to come up and just say a few words. Specifically, with regards to the TCI textbook, it's a great resource for us for several reasons. Most importantly, it's what the middle school is using, so it provides that nice bridge from elementary to middle school. It's also very well-aligned to our grade level standards, and it has strong reading. And Mrs. Almeida, Miss Almeida, excuse me, was involved in the process, taking a look at the readability of the text, the text features, the images, and of course, we were looking at the appropriateness of the history content. But what makes it stand apart from the other programs that we looked at is that it has high-quality instructional practices embedded right into it, hands-on activities that get kids up and out of their seats in learning social studies in different ways. And it also has a teacher toolkit, which has great digital tools to address the needs of diverse learners, and it allows teachers to create shared assessments that can be used across the district that we like also, and also it acts as a learning management tool, where everything is right there for the teachers, and the students don't have the technology access, they have the textbooks. So I'll turn it over to Diane.
I'm Dawn Salone, I'm retired now, so I shouldn't tell you how I feel about this program to come back and speak about it. I worked with Diane's committee for the last two years, and it was a lot of fun, actually. TCI is an interactive program. It comes with ready-to-teach lessons, presentations, complete student resources, and assessments, like Diane said, that the district can actually construct using questions that are already born at another website, so that everyone in the district would have the same assessments, which will be a really important part of it. The fourth grade book is called Social Studies: The Live Regions of Our Country, and it presents the five regions of the US through economics, geography, political science, and history. The teacher, the way it works is a teacher projects onto the smartboard the essential question, the preview activities, there's a component that students interact with in that manner, and then they also have a textbook, and then there are printable student pages for them to do work on, mapping skills and so forth. So at the beginning of the lesson, there's a geography challenge. Pairs of students are presented with geography questions, they use the available maps and the textbook to solve the questions. So there is a lot of hands-on geography work. Just to give you an example of a couple of the chapters, for the five regions, the one that we focused on, Moses Train Tour in the Northeast. Again, the kids are presented with an essential question, they have reading for understanding activities where they work in groups with mapping skills as they visit sites, they visit sites throughout the region, and they map them, and provide symbols to represent, so they work with mapping symbols. There's a lot of interactive activities that they do with the other students in the class, so there's a lot of conversation and discussion, which is really important. There's a big chapter in there on researching the state's government, and the essential question is, how does your state's government work? And in the reading for understanding activity, the students play a game, they do different activities to learn the sequence of the state's legislative process. After researching the state's government, they write a letter to the state leader asking that he or she help solve a problem by working to get new law passed. We connected that with a field trip to the State House, where they do the mock legislative session, and Sue Donovan actually had her bill in the chambers to try and get that passed, of course, those students were all fingered that, they wrote excellent letters. They get to talk on the microphone, they present their arguments, and then they vote. So it's a really great resource. My students love the program, they find it extremely engaging and interesting, and of course, that leads to more student learning. I would highly recommend it, and I'm sorry, I'm only going to get to use it if I so, in a void right in the classroom. So, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Christina Tompkins, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher for a Gravel School. I piloted the TCI program this year, and I've been on Diane's committee for the past year and a half, working on the curriculum and building the curriculum. And aside, just one extra thing that I really love about TCI, physically having a textbook versus having our children on computers, is the fact that the children are reading this rich text, they're able to note-take, and as a fifth-grade teacher, sending them off to middle school, note-taking is huge, and it's important that children have the text, they're able to refer back to the text, they just have those pages in front of them. So that I found to be very valuable to the kids. We had four this year, that we, my co-teacher and I, were constantly like, I need those scores, so we had to get them in the classroom, so that the kids could have those books and take their notes, and it's just very valuable. So aside from all the interactive activities and things that are able to be projected on the board, a textbook is huge, so thank you for considering our textbooks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, you made a remark that ticked my interest. Is it your feeling that we should have more textbooks rather than just computer orientation?
I think we should have a good balance of textbooks and online resources. I feel that we have our math, a lot of our math that we do is projectable, and there's some online resources. Our science curriculum, a lot of it is online, the children are reading articles, we try to print what we can, but also save on paper and that kind of thing, we do have articles that we give them electronically. When the option came up about having a textbook versus online, just finding that balance, I feel, is huge. I'm thirty-six years old, so coming from an era where I always had a textbook, and there wasn't a lot online, so I think it's just a good balance, so I feel like if we can bring our kids back to that, it would be ideal, so, in my opinion.
I happen to be more than twice your age. Yeah, I want to tell you that I agree with you on this.
Thank you.
I think you heard a little bit about how we are trying to build that bridge to the middle school, so I also invited Jeff Drift to here, our middle school curriculum leader for social studies, to share his experience with the program.
Good evening, I see some familiar faces. My name is Jeff Drift, if you don't know me, I'm the lead teacher of social studies at the middle school. I've been fortunate, even in the beginning, I paid for TCI in the high market, because I know exactly how good it was. And I thought, for the last eight years, I have used it in fidelity in my classroom. I'm fortunate enough to have some of your kids in the classroom, you can ask them the impact that TCI had. It has helped many teachers, including myself, that kicked me in middle school, to bring social studies alive for our students. If students came into the middle school with experience with this program, it would make implementation more streamlined, and the use of resources more consistent throughout our district. Most of the lessons are geared around cooperative group activities, many of which put our students in situations where they have to act out what they have learned. This allows students to demonstrate their understanding of the material at a higher level of thinking. Most of the sources would be very difficult to obtain without the program, and the primary sources that come with the TCI program are relative and up-to-date. For instance, last year, the sixth-grade students were given an opportunity to compare specific state constitutions, and how their impact was made in forming our US Constitution. These critical thinking opportunities are exactly what our students need in social studies classes. As you know, our Constitution is challenging to read, but this program encourages the students to use close reading strategies they need to acquire to help them in future years. As you have heard from a couple of my colleagues, and Ms. Saniga, our students would benefit from this curriculum. It would instill consistent terminology and the same instructional approach. I hope we permit the elementary schools to obtain these resources, they are rich in content, and are the most up-to-date program available. And kind of to piggyback, we've said over here, I do like the balance of both textbooks and technology, because I think some of our students benefit from one and also benefit from the other. And I think that is, it's a great program, like I said, I've been using it for eight years, I have testimonies from kids that if you would like them, I can share them with you, but ultimately, I've been using it, like I said, with fidelity for the past eight years, and I'm finding more and more of my social studies teachers as a lead teacher that are using it in their classrooms, and they're becoming more comfortable with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So as you can see, we have great teachers working on this curriculum, and it's been an inspiration to be with them and to see their passion and sharing of ideas, so we're very thrilled with the outcome of this curriculum. So, do you have any questions for me on the textbook?
Any other questions? Mr. Bentham?
And if you don't have it right now, we're available, I'm just interested in what the price tag is.
I cannot have it right now.
It's okay. That's all right.
I believe I can bring that back for the next meeting, because it has to come before you want to.
Also, I'd be interested, because it sounds like a great program, this is going on to the teachers that have used this or have seen it, are you seeing where some kids who are really not interested in social studies, they're getting hooked into this as well? Are you seeing that?
It's really appealing to the elementary students, the way they run the program. So in the book, The Train Tour of the Northeast, there is, what's projected on the smartboard is a picture of the sites that they're going to visit as they travel through the region, and there's a voice on the train, the conductor, and they are actually reading what's in the book. And it has audio, like the train whistle, and you know, chup, 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 it's like, they love that, and so, that's all it takes.
They have the music that are from the eighteen hundreds that I couldn't get, that really bring a lot of the movement westward to life for the students. For me, I had the kids, I had the kids, two years ago, kind of act out feudalism, and one was a servant, one was a knight, one was a king, one was the lord, and they had to go through the whole process of how the whole system worked, you know, the servant was planting the corn, or planting whatever it was, then handing it off to the servant people, and then the lord had to ask for, you know, plot of land, and then he had to go, and obviously, the knights had to defend, and it was awesome, the kids were in it. And then at the end of it, they asked them, how did you feel with your servant? And they're like, it was awful! And like, yep, nine-ninety-seven, I mean, the lords were like, yeah, this is great, but, for the most part, but they really felt it and understood. At that moment, that was the, for me as a teacher, the aha moment, I said, you know what, they get it, and they understood that how each part of society worked together flatteringly, to have, make anything thrive, help them feel safe.
Nice, great. And for Dr. Bryson's information, just, I think social studies folks have put in a market with basketball coaching, because Jeff took us to states last year, and I'd have a more trouble with him and Christopher to go, I'm just saying. Life is good.
Mr. Ratchell?
I just have a quick question around program. It sounds like everybody's enthused about maybe these TCIs and how they put this together. Do we know if this organization does, I know we're talking social studies, we're kind of off-base, something to be quiet, but I know that we have other areas in the district that we also need to focus, our educational resources and that sort of thing. And I love the presentation, this is fantastic, but do they also provide science and math and some of those other areas that we also need to focus? And have we evaluated those from a company or an organization that puts together a program that we really, really like? In one area, can we, have we looked at other areas of programs that they're putting together that might be beneficial to us as well?
That's a great question. I know that, I believe it was last year, they developed a new science textbook, a program for science. And it's an interesting time to be looking at textbooks because of that new state bill that requires that school districts purchase one, probably going to be about five different choices for a reading program, or five choices for a math program, and they have to be highly rated from Ed Reports, it's a national site that rates instructional programs. So our math program is on that highly rated list already, so we feel very good about that. Ms. Almeida and I are just beginning the process of going through a cohort of learning, where we'll be looking at the research with the local teachers, and looking at research-based programs, and with the hopes of having a decision for possible adoption by the end of next year. So that would be for ELA, and he'd have to have programs in place by 2025 from that list, and then science, I believe it's two years after that. So we're at an interesting time, because if we went with a new science program at this time, and invested all of that money, then it was not one of those highly rated programs, we would have a problem needing that. But it is worth looking at. Teachers have access to programs, and many of them, you'll hear, will supplement from different programs, or they'll start to look at it, so we can get a feel for it that way. As far as I know, TCI is only focused on science and social studies, I've never seen their name come up for a math or reading program.
So in answer, today, at the State Superintendent's Association, the Commissioner of Education for Rhode Island spoke, and really stressed the importance for all districts to really focus on making sure that we have alignment, that we are implementing a curriculum that is challenging yet engaging for our students. And so when I hear the dates of 2025, 2027, one of the things that I would just share with the committee is that our students can wait five or six years to get the right curriculum, the right textbooks, so that is certainly something that we're going to look forward to do over the next year or so.
Thank you very much. And just a follow-up, and I know we've talked about it before, but we just always need to keep in mind that we look at the efficacy of the programs that we put in place, whether if we have a top-rated math program, but we're not seeing consistent gains, then clearly something isn't aligning with what our students need to learn versus what that program is providing us. So I just, I would leave it at that, that it always needs to be evaluated, and even if we've got the best program on there, it might not be the right one for us, and we need to be evaluated further.
True, that is part of the adoption of any program, is looking at the implementation, and is it being implemented, do teachers have the professional training necessary to implement it appropriately, and then to third point, is that the right match for us?
So the one other point that I would make about the match for our students, really, administrators have a responsibility to set the conditions and the environments in their buildings and across the district, that we have to be a district focused on high-quality teaching and learning in every classroom for every student, every day. It's not a motto, it's not a slogan, it has to be something that they are actually checking to find, and so that means that they have to spend more of their time in classrooms providing formal and informal feedback to teachers. That's how teaching gets better, that's how learning improves, and ultimately, students will be able to demonstrate the mastery of content in a variety of manner. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I can attest to the benefit of the interactive nature of this. When I recall my daughter being, now who's now 14, being in social studies class with Mr. Brifka, I want you to know that she is still singing Ancient Mesopotamia. Is that part of this program?
Ms. Schofield has a question.
I will not, I will send you a link later.
Ms. Schofield?
Yes.
I have a quick question. Is this aligned with the Common Core or is this outside of the Common Core? Very curious.
Diane, can you address that? It is, let me explain that. The Common Core does not have standards for social studies. It has standards for reading and writing, like reading, writing, and mathematics. So, but it does incorporate the Common Core standards for reading and writing and making sure that students are reading great, local, appropriate texts and that there are lessons that have students practicing those Common Core reading and writing standards within the context of social studies.
It sounds like this really enhances that at a much higher level.
Can you say that again?
It sounds like this enhances that Common Core basics at a much higher level.
It does. It's a good way to enhance Common Core learning.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke about it and to Diane and Santa. Thank you. And just to let the committee know, so this will come back to the next meeting for the vote, and we can have those numbers for the cost as well for that meeting.
Thank you.
Recommendation, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee, approve first reading of the Behavior Threat Assessment Team policy.
So moved.
Any discussion?
It doesn't have a number or a letter thing. Do you know where it's going in the policy, girl?
Good question. We have, this just came down from the state, and so we discussed it at our most recent policy, subcommittee. I don't know exactly where it goes, but I'm assuming it's going to go in the TCI.
Does it mirror the state policy?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Does it mirror the state policy?
It does.
This is a policy, I'm sorry. Yeah, so our legal counsel worked on this policy because the state made it that all districts have to have a threat assessment team now. And so that's where, so we asked them to work on a policy that encompasses all of the state requirements. So we will assign a number. And then one of the things I was going to ask about too was usually we have legal references at the bottom at the end of the policy, so that's something that we'll look into too.
Mr. Rajat?
Section four, and we may not want to be specific and tie our hands, but under evaluation and review, we talked about reviewing and updating on a regular basis. Typically, when I see something like a regular basis, I'm looking to turn up for more specifics. Is there, is this something that we would look to do annually? Or is it only going to be when state law changes? Or is there any periodicity that we think we should put in here that's a little more specific than on a regular basis? Or is there a reason why we weren't specific?
That's a good question. We were just working on trying to get this implemented for the beginning of the school year since this is something so new. That is a really good point. We can certainly discuss that in the next policy committee meeting. I'm assuming, I've been trying to get a better handle on it. We've almost policies, and I'm hoping, I assume that we'll be in two years or so. Things just change, so we didn't want to necessarily hamstring ourselves by putting in a date or time. But that's a really great point.
But I think that part, that is, that does exist there because as laws change, we will, will be required to update. Yeah, so will you be using this as that happens? I just, I thought that that was a matter of course, and we've seen it at the end of a policy. Every year you have to review how, when our legal team lets us know that there's been a change in the State House and that we have to make a change in the policy. So I'm on, if there's confusion, I'm not sure he needs to be there at all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I, maybe it's not pertinent, but do we have a timeframe in which this team will be established if this policy passes?
I'm impressed, I haven't discussed that yet, but I know it was something to say I'll, I shall.
So what I can tell you is that we will actually begin the process of implementing this Behavioral Threat Team Assessment Team from the first day of school. It will be a district group. There will comprise members of PPS as well as administrators and some law enforcement. We do have to work through how much law enforcement will be at the table as it relates to lower-level offenses, but certainly for the higher level, they would certainly be there as well as potentially maybe DCYAT. Just critical about this policy is that at any time when we believe that we have a youngster or maybe an adult even that's on our property that poses a threat to themselves, to others, we want to make sure that we're implementing this so that we can provide support, but also make sure that we can keep everybody safe. And so this is one of those policies that it came at such a time of the year where we absolutely need to get it implemented as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I agree. There's nothing that prevents us from implementing something ahead of this policy being approved. We'd be proactive at that point rather than reactive and so on.
Any other questions? Mr. Bentham?
If you look at also the school committee members that continue to join that team, I would be, I'd give you my, to kind of take person.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is the Student Code of Conduct update. Mr. Rajat?
Yes, so I just wanted to share with the committee that on last week, we had a number of district administrators that had the opportunity to look at our current code of conduct, and they were able to actually try on or model different scenarios. There were four scenarios that they then had to determine what was the appropriate consequence. And then after they made their decision, they shared out, and they were able to then use the current policy and determine what the policy says about that behavior and whether or not the current policy even includes that behavior. And so for instance, there was a scenario that talked about vaping not included in the current language. And so then they were able to look at model policies from other districts around the country. And we settled on a model policy that we believe will be supportive of our efforts to implement a code that has consistency, clarity, and is very clear about the expectations for student behavior. And most importantly, is something that everyone can understand. And we recognize that we're going to have to work with administrators, and administrators are going to have to work with their staff to implement. And so because of the time that it takes to get this type of policy to the school committee for you to review it and to make a vote and a decision on it, so we're going to do something, we're going to have a draft Student Code of Conduct for the beginning of the school year. And so we're going to use that while we continue to refine the work that our district administrators have done. And we will be prepared to bring you a draft copy of that at the August 26 meeting.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you for looking at that. I think one of the things that's important to me as a parent, as a school committee member, is that we're following our processes and our procedures. And that when we don't follow our processes and procedures, clearly that means that there's something wrong with it. And I'd like it to be a bigger conversation with administration on why this policy needs to change rather than a teacher or administrator just not following it. So I think there's an accountability part, but I really appreciate you looking into this and determining whether, you know, I recall when we had one discussion that there was, the first time a student was tardy, it was a four-hour office detention. And nobody's going to give a kid a four-hour office detention because they were late to school for the first time. So that's a, that's a policy that just didn't make sense and that nobody's enforcing. And so it's better to have that open conversation and say, "This policy doesn't make sense," rather than just ignoring it. So I appreciate you looking into this and working through that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question, Dr. Bryce. Will, so at the moment, you have administrators working on, will there be teacher involvement at some point in processes?
Absolutely. So what we expect to do is to go and share with faculty at all of our schools to get their feedback. And so it will not be final until sometime in the fall. But we also recognize that we need a skeleton framework that will allow people to give us feedback as well as to get us open during the school year. What we currently have is just not, it is not detailed enough, and it's not supportive enough, it does not have a focus on things like PBIS. It doesn't have a focus on restorative justice practices, those alternatives to out-of-school suspensions. It does not clearly articulate the role that classroom teachers and TAs play in creating the type of culture and climate that is conducive to student learning. It doesn't clearly delineate the roles of administrators or the role of the school resource officer. And so those are all things that we absolutely need time and feedback to get right, but we needed also to start that process. And so that's what we've done.
I just didn't hear you talk. I'm wondering too if it might be valuable to have a bit of student voice in that conversation as well?
Absolutely.
I have one more. During our policy curriculum meeting last week, I remember we had some discussions around creating sort of a matrix. Do we were going to use sort of middle school and high school, so there is some consistency? Can you speak a little bit more about that?
So within the Code of Conduct, what we'll see is the front really talks about our expectation for student behavior, how the entire school community is here to be a support and the different roles that people within the school community play. It will identify different resources within the community, whether it be school-based or community-based. And then it will define based on Rhode Island discipline, it will define the different offenses that are, that we report on to Rhode Island Department of Education. And then to make it easier for people to understand and to ensure consistency, we have something that we call the Matrix. And so the Matrix actually talks about different levels. And so we believe that there will be four levels, five levels of consequence. A level that is purely classroom-based, where a teacher or a TA is implementing the consequence. A level that is focused on sharing responsibility between the teacher and administrator. There's a, the third level is focused on administrators, but it is focused on keeping students in school. So it does not include out-of-school consequences. The fourth level, of course, we're getting more serious, there will be out-of-school consequences up from one to 10 days as a maximum consequence. And then level five really talks about those instances where what we want to do is make sure that the student is not a harm to themselves, not a harm to others. And the consequences go from 11 days out of school up through 44 days. We want to reserve expulsion for the absolute most egregious offenses for which we would make that recommendation that the student should no longer be able to participate in the school community for a period of time. But that needs to be very serious, very seriously considered. The other thing about the Matrix that is really good is that it clearly shows when you're able to give a consequence and a range of consequences and when you can't go outside of that. And so in terms of consistency, it helps parents to know, it helps students to know, it helps teachers to know, it helps administrators to know. So everyone's on the same page, and everyone is focused on the same consequences. One of the things that unfortunately we find, and this is pretty much everywhere, is that teachers will send a student to the office expecting something to happen when the real power lies with the teacher's ability to redirect that student, to have that conversation, to speak with the parent, and get them back engaged. And so there's a lot of work spent on the role that teachers and other staff play before we're removing students from school.
Thank you. Anything else? I like that. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bryce. Okay, so next we have Subcommittee Reports on Initiatives and Policies.
Okay, back to Policy Curriculum. Our next meeting will be, I believe, on September the 3rd, which is that first, first day of school too. Oh my goodness, at six o'clock at Oliver Building.
It's going to be a great day.
It will be a great day. I'm looking forward to it. We're going to continue to be working on the conduct, as Dr. Bryce mentioned. We're also kind of taking a deeper look at the Wellness Subcommittee policy that's been pushed up from the Wellness Subcommittee. And I'm sure there's a handful of other things that are going to present themselves, but at the moment, this is kind of our focus. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rajat on the budget?
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you to everyone that came to our meeting this evening. Our next meeting will be on September 16th, which is the third Monday of the month, in this room at 6:30. We'll continue our discussion on our facilities. One of our big topics will be capital funds and capital projects. We're going to have a nice, in-depth discussion about that. And we'll also continue to discuss the closeout of the FY19 budget, our upcoming audit that's currently scheduled for October, and our FY20 budget. So we hope to see everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Personnel and Contract negotiations. Adam is on vacation with his family at the moment, so don't pull me on it, but Adam mutually has his meetings before the regular school committee meetings, so I'm guessing he will have one Monday, the 26th of August. And we will post that on the website when we're absolutely sure, but generally, he'll have those before the school committee meetings. So that's what I'm guessing for that. Carly with focus.
Okay, back to wellness. We just finished polling our membership to establish our first meeting for the school year, and that will be on August the 28th at four o'clock at the Oliver Building, and everyone is welcome to attend. I also wanted to let everybody know that the Wellness Subcommittee is sponsoring a Mental Health Matters Community Conversation that's going to be held on Tuesday, September the 24th at the Hope Annual Auditorium. We're going to be tackling and addressing suicide prevention and the resources that are available in our community and in our schools. We're going to be having high school students coming to present based on learning bunches that we have this year. I have a bunch of flyers. I will be lucky enough to be emceeing the event, so we would love to have you come. If you have any questions or any ideas, please let me know. You will be co-sponsoring that with Five Five Five, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Bristol Health Equities Institute. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 6:08 PM on the 24th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I move the ledger.
Second.
All in paper?
Aye.